If I told you that no union, no municipal union has negotiated this, if I told you that this was purely a municipal interpretation of a regulation and that it's not that longstanding, would you be able to prove me wrong?
I mean, again, I would have to look at the, you know, back at the information. But I don't, I don't think that the proposed legislation, I don't think you should prohibit what can and cannot be collectively bargained.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you.
Thank you, Representative Senator Kushner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McEwen, you just gave us an example of salary continuation, a municipality and union negotiating to make up the gap on salary continuation, which, you know, would be a very generous benefit, as you said. And clearly, the legislature could perhaps pass a statute that disallowed that, although I think it's unlikely the legislature would do that. But we hear compelling testimony today about an injured fireman who was injured in the course of the work and had his pensions reduced because he had a partial, permanent partial disability. And so I think that's a very compelling case that was made and one that I think we as a legislative body have to consider. I do want to also ask you, are you familiar with separability clauses in union contracts?
Going, I couldn't comment on every single, you know, type of thing that would be negotiated through collective bargaining. But what I can comment on is that, you know, and I did not hear the testimony, but, and I'm happy to read the testimony of what was given today. But, you know, what, what is clear on this piece of the proposed legislation is that you would be able to circumvent the collective bargaining process and, and with these particular provisions. And so I, you know, I can't comment on every single, you know, thing of negotiation. But in regards to this proposed legislation, you wouldn't be able to collectively bargain pension offsets.
So this, um, this clause that I just mentioned pertains to this kind of an issue. And while we would not want to abrogate contracts, there's a reason why we have separability clauses that allow, if a provision is passed into law, that changes the contract because it makes it no longer legal to continue some provision of that agreement. The contract is then preserved, the rest of the contract. And in many, many cases, employer and union come back together to negotiate replacement clauses. And so there is a provision to do that. I think Representative Winkler spoke earlier about certain, certain conditions for state employees that are not permitted in collective bargaining. And that's not unusual as well for laws to be created. We have a minimum wage law that says you can't negotiate to pay people less than the minimum wage. There are many, many statutes that do set out basic minimal standards and, and conditions for employment. And, you know, those are good things to have. And I think for that reason, I have to say, I have not been convinced by your arguments. And I think that it's good to protect workers from a situation where an employer would take away their permanent partial disability payment by reducing their pension. So thank you for your testimony tonight, but I have to say I've not been persuaded.
Thank you, Senator Kushner. I do not see any other hands raised to comment or question. I will just add to what the business said. I have to echo those sentiments. I, I am going over that story in my head as she spoke. And it's hard, you know, to understand why or how we can justify a pension offset for first responders to put their lives on the line and then are injured and no longer able to work. And to have them penalized for that just seems, um, things cruel to me. So I do thank you for your testimony. I thank you for your time and I thank you for your patience and hanging in there tonight so that we could hear your side of it. And with that being said, we will move on. And next up, we have Catherine Kennedy. Is Catherine Kennedy still with us? Okay, Mary Amanda Lukinville. Mary Amanda Lukinville. Moving on, we have self-employed Connecticut normal, Joseph LaChant. Is Joseph with us? All right, we're getting there. President of the Alliance for Sensible Markets, Adam Smith. Okay, Laura Lanhart. Is Laura still with us? Moving on, we have Monica Walters, Assistant Probate Clerk. Monica, are you still with us?
I got word that Monica was no longer able to stay on due to having to go to work tomorrow.
All right, thank you for that.
Also Laura Lan, Lanhart was not able to stay on.
Okay, so that brings us to esthetician Patrice Russell. All right, and that takes us to our last page. And we start there, CW Local 1298, Jim Case.
I'm here, Representative Porter.
All right, well, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Senator Kushner, Representative Porter, Senator Sampson, Representative Roar, and the members of Labor and Public Employees Committee. I am here to testify in support of HB 6383 and Act Concerning Call Centers and Notice of Closures. My name is James Case. I'm with CWA Local 1298, representing approximately 2,500 members in the state of Connecticut with close to 600 of those members who are call center workers. Call centers are important economic lifeline in many communities in our state and across the country when estimated 31,000 call center workers employed in this industry in our state alone. However, thousands of call center workers across the country have lost their jobs in recent years as major corporations have offshored customer service operations. Call center jobs are singularly vulnerable to relocation, basically with the flip of a switch. Just recently, AT&amp;T and Verizon have moved hundreds of good paying jobs out of the state. AT&amp;T alone moved over 100 of our members' jobs in Meriden just two years ago. Those are good paying union jobs with an average income of over $90,000. The median income in Meriden is only $57,000 a year. Many of our members have dedicated their entire careers to this call center, working there for many decades. We are hopeful the bill will pass this session. Last year it was HB 5273 and had garnered 40 co-sponsors before the session was ended prematurely. The Corbus bill is simple. No state taxpayer money should be used for companies that ship our jobs out of state. Responsible businesses will not be adversely affected by this bill. This is a pro-business bill. Businesses who invest in Connecticut by creating call center jobs will continue to receive the appropriate tax credits and subsidies that they do today. The bill applies only to call centers with 50 or more employees that move 30% or more of their operations out of state. Call centers are good paying, solid middle-class jobs. One call center closing can devastate an entire community. When a call center closes, the state of Connecticut is faced with increased unemployment claims and expense. Similar bills have passed in other states. In 2018, Louisiana passed a version of the bill that penalizes all employers that utilize state tax dollars and then move jobs out of state by allowing this state to clawback state funds received by the employer. In 2019, six states, New York, New Jersey, Colorado, Maine, Alabama, and Nevada, passed versions of this bill to protect call center jobs and consumers, largely with bipartisan support. We need to stop this trend. And with this legislation, we can ensure that taxpayers are not footing the bill for outsourcing. The federal tax bill that passed in 2017 incentivizes outsourcing by taxing offshore profits at a lower rate than domestic profits. And as a result, we have lost hundreds of thousands of call center jobs to offshoring. This is exactly why this bill is so important. This is the type of bill we need to pass now. It's a great opportunity for legislators to show they're willing to deliver for working people. I thank the Labor Committee for their leadership introducing and sponsoring this important legislation. Additionally, CWA 1298 supports HB 6376 and HB 6380. I urge the committee and Connecticut lawmakers to vote favorably this year to ensure pay equity in Connecticut and to end discrimination of ethnic hairstyles. I'd be glad to answer any questions the committee may have. Sorry, I have a really dry mouth. It's been a long day.
No apologies necessary. We've been with you as you've been with us. I do have a couple of questions. Is it a common practice amongst the call centers to frequently locate, relocate, relocate or close?
Um, as far as, like, do they just move around all the time? I work for Frontier. Our call centers have been here since the SNET days. So I can only anecdotally speak for, for the company I work for. But, I mean, they've been here for decades. So no, generally, they don't just hop around.
Okay. And do you know off the top of your head how many call centers in Connecticut employ more than 50 people?
Uh, I don't, because that's really elusive info. I did a lot of research on it. I know there's definitely more than 30 call centers in the state. There's no way to track how many people they have currently.
Wow. Well, thank you for shedding some light on that. That's interesting. I don't see any other hand for quite, oh, I'm sorry, Senator Kushner.
I'm sorry, it was, I was being slow at this hour getting my hand raised. But I do want to thank Jim for testifying here tonight on this bill. We, as you know, we heard this bill last year and moving through the process. And we were looking forward to moving on that bill. And it seems really important to me that we address this situation, not just for the workers that you represent, but really for any workers in Connecticut that are in this industry. I know you've made advances in other states. And I think those advances, particularly in New York, are really important for us to look at and see as a potential model for how we can make sure that we're protecting these workers here in Connecticut. So I appreciate you bringing all this information to us tonight.
Thank you. If I may, can I add something about the New York bill?
Absolutely.
So there was some erroneous information that was given earlier on that Governor Cuomo had vetoed this bill and it was vastly changed after. He signed into law a bill that was very similar to this with not many changes. So that, that is not correct. It was actually signed into, into law and there were some minor changes, but there always will be.
Thank you for that clarification. And I think we can look at New York and what they've done. And maybe perhaps that will be something that's useful for us to, to do here in Connecticut. So thank you for that testimony.
Thank you.
All right, and next up, I'm not sure who had their hand up first. I'll go with Ressigniano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good, good evening, sir. How are you? I just had a quick question. That, all the other states that passed this, was there some sort of taxpayer money component to it? Because you mentioned that before and I think we discussed it a couple of years ago. When this bill was before us, but you know, I'm having trouble remembering. Because that would be supportive of, of protecting taxpayer dollars or any money that was given to a company. Do the other states that prohibited the leaving of these have some sort of, I don't know, tax break or taxpayer money involved with it?
Um, thank you for the question. I have read the other bills. I don't believe they do. I know you and I had talked about it last year. And if, if a company has not already taken state money, then the biggest teeth of the bill doesn't even apply to them. And that's the tax clawbacks and them not getting tax subsidies up to five years in the future. So most of the bill wouldn't even apply to them if they haven't already taken state money.
So, so basically, just for my own recollection, you're saying that you would have to have participated in some sort of state subsidy for this bill to even apply to you, to that company?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Interrupt, please, I'm Italian, we can handle.
I'm French Canadian, so we do it too. So the, the clawbacks, basically, any, any call center that decides to move more than 30% of their workforce and they have more than 50 employees, if, if they don't give 100 days notice, well, it doesn't, the notice doesn't matter in that respect, they would be ineligible for state, any sort of state subsidies or tax rebates or grants five years in the future because they're moving that work out of state. Five years in the past, the state can then get any money that they've invested in this business, right? Because why should we subsidize a company that is going to use that money to move that work out of state? So if they have not, if they haven't taken any state money, then there's nothing to clawback.
So that's in the bill presently?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, you can't take, you can't take back what you haven't given.
Listen, I, I stated it before. I think a company gives up a lot of rights and a lot of freedoms if they state they take taxpayer money. So thanks for answering my question.
You're welcome.
Next up, Representative Aurora.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Case, for your testimony. I have a really quick one, which is that I'm being told, I'm hearing, and I just wanted, wanted to get your opinion that as our, you know, minimum wage goes up, as some of the other laws get in, you know, some of the restrictive labor issues being promoted by the Progressive Committee go up, we're gonna basically say tata to, you know, pretty much this whole industry, you know? And they're basically going abroad, they're going to other states, you know? This is, and you know, we don't want them here because, you know, the economics don't work, you know? And we have to think about, you know, this industry. And I, I'm told that it's about, about 10% of our jobs which are gonna be at risk and we're working hard to attract investment other ways. So I just want to, want to hear what you hear there out in the field. You know, I, I know it's very hard to kill, hard, hard to create jobs, you know? But it's easy to kill them, you know, calling them bad jobs or not good jobs. So I just want to hear, you know, do you hear that there is still more, you know, that in the last three years or two years, jobs have moved out and there's much more a trend here for these kind of jobs to just move out of state?
Uh, thank you for the question. The point is, these jobs are particularly vulnerable, right? You could answer a call right now and not get anything the rest of the day because someone decided to reroute those calls somewhere differently. That's why this bill is important, because these are good jobs and they are the most vulnerable jobs anywhere. They can move tomorrow. You don't have to pick up your, your lunch pail. You don't have to do anything. The company moves the jobs, right? Now, right, if you work in the Philippines, you're getting paid significantly less. The reason people stay in Connecticut is because we have the most highly trained, highly educated workforce in the country, straight up, right? So a lot of companies take pride in that and they want that here. So will every call center job move? No, because a lot of people take pride in their business. But there are some bad actors that would want to subvert that, so.
Well, that, thank you for your answer. You know, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, as we transition to higher value added jobs, we don't lose our other jobs so quickly. You know, we are, we, you know, we love to, to have better, high-quality, high-paying jobs in Connecticut. That's our only purpose in life here. You know, I'm sitting here from 10:00 AM to midnight just to make sure that, you know, we don't pass laws which basically kill jobs. Because, you know, sometimes what meets eye is not the easiest thing, you know? There is unintended consequences and lots of them, just like what you're saying. You know, we're gonna lose 100,000 jobs, you know, because of certain laws we have passed. And, you know, that's okay, because we're gonna want to create new ones. But it's hard, it's hard for me to see that, you know? It pains me. But thank you, sir, for your testimony, you know? Please be valid and, and I appreciate your time. And thank you, sorry for keeping you this late. But we have to ask these questions in the future. We will try to work out the way to, to have bills, you know, smaller number of bills so that we can ask all these questions and yet not go to 11:30, 26:00 PM. Sorry about that.
I am the proud banner holder of the last page.
Thank you, and thank you, Jim, for your testimony. We do look forward to working with you to get this bill moved forward this year. Unfortunately, COVID did cause it to pause. But here we are, back at it again. And I think your testimony has given us an opportunity to see it in a clearer way. And I thank you for the clarification that you've given to the questions that have been asked tonight. Please give everyone at CWA my regards.
Absolutely.
And I look, I look forward to partnering with you in the future. Thank you. All right, next up, we're getting there, guys, we're getting there. Let's see. Why I want to go back there. We are on the last page. Julia Falcida, Julia, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Representative Porter.
All right. Thank you for hanging in there. Nice to see you.
Good to see you as well. Thank you, everybody, and good evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm testifying in support of HB number 6383 and Act Concerning Call Centers and Notice of Closures. My name is Julia Falcida Angelus and I work as a researcher for Unit Here Local 34, which represents hundreds of workers at the Yale Medicine Call Center. By providing these jobs with protection from some, from subcontracting, this bill would keep good accessible union jobs in Connecticut and protect high-quality patient care. The Yale Medicine Care Center is staffed by people whose medical background, experience, and familiarity with doctors mean that they are able to provide a very high level of service. When you call in to ask a question about insurance or about your child's treatment, you want the person on the other end of the line to be someone with professional experience who understands the medical system. You don't want it to be someone with limited medical background, if any at all, who is dealing with 100 other callers and not even being paid a living wage. The Care Center also brings major economic benefits to Connecticut. In an economy where black women make 62 cents on the dollar for white men, good accessible union jobs can be major engines of social change. At the Care Center, 61% of staff are people of color and 32% are black women. Many of these staff members have gone from working multiple part-time, part-time jobs with low wages and limited health care to being able to support their families with dignity. Nobody is getting rich, but basic middle-class goals like owning a home and sending kids to college become achievable. Currently, the Care Center brings in $5.15 million in annual wages and benefits to New Haven residents alone, many of whom live in New Haven's poorest neighborhoods. Connecticut has suffered from major income inequality for many years and jobs like those in the Care Center are helping to close this gap. Connecticut must protect these kinds of jobs. On behalf of myself and our members at the Care Center, I ask the Labor Committee to support this important bill to protect their livelihoods and to keep patient care from being compromised. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Senator Kushner?
Well, that was great testimony. I really appreciate the perspective you bring, sharing with us the, the data, the information that really does reinforce our thinking about how do we keep good paying jobs here in Connecticut? And the offshoring of these jobs so frequently is chasing very low bottom line so that they can make more profit and the, the business can make more profit. And, you know, I, I know it's been expressed here that perhaps our $15 minimum wage might be, might serve as a problem for call center workers and reasons for those jobs to be offshored. And, you know, I think hearing your testimony here tonight really affirms what we're trying to do is make sure that the jobs in Connecticut stay in Connecticut and continue to provide good living wages for the people who live here. So I really appreciate the data you brought to this conversation. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, I see no further hands. Julia, I will just echo the sentiments to Senator Kushner. And I do want to thank you for an awesome testimony tonight and for hanging in there. It's been a very long day and an even longer night. So we appreciate your commitment to this cause. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative Porter.
You're welcome. You have a good night. Uh, next up, we have Attorney William Sherman, Dinsmore and Shaw LLC. Okay, moving on, we have Linnell Graham, Yale Medicine Call Center. Hey, moving on, owner of MM Consult Connecticut, Brian Essenter.
How you doing, guys? I'm still here.
All right. Hi, how are you?
Doing all right. Little tired, but, you know, hanging in there as you guys are. So thank you, guys, for still being here.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right.
Have a good one.
Just want to thank you very much. So Senator Kushner, Representative Porter, Senator Sampson, and Representative Aurora and members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee, thank you for listening to all of our testimonies today as we run into tomorrow. I'm here regarding HB 6377. My name is Brian Essenter. I'm a pharmacist and I've been a dispensary manager at multiple dispensaries in Connecticut. I've been working in Connecticut's Medical Marijuana Program for six years now. I'm also a patient of the Connecticut Medical Marijuana Program and have been very proud of the program and the improvements that we've made over the years. As we create a brand-new adult-use cannabis market in Connecticut, I believe that HB 6377 is essential in setting up a fair, equitable marketplace. I, I'm not going to bore you with all the details that so many other people have gone into today. But as my testimony says, it's very obvious that you have spent a lot of time with advocates and, and a lot of people who have been very involved in the equity, not just in Connecticut, but in many other states. There have been a lot of other states that we can learn from in what we're doing here, from their, their failures and their successes and how they've made some adjustments to try to, to bring that along. Some of the things that I wanted to speak to you today are really just my concerns. My number one concern, this was mentioned kind of early on, is the bill did mention host community agreements and our HCAs. This is a very big potential for, you know, predatory action, potential for bribes, as we've seen in Massachusetts very significantly. That's being prosecuted on a federal level now. And it's really been a major barrier, significantly so, for the equity applicants in these towns as well. These towns have been looking for thousands of dollars in donations, whether it be a park or, you know, sidewalks or whatever. And, and these are really things that we want to try to avoid. Yes, these towns that are taking on these, you know, so-called risks might need something. But we want to be very careful how we structure those programs for them. That's probably the biggest thing. It did seem as though there, there were quite a few layers of government that are created in this. I, I think some of them were 100% necessary. I would be a little bit careful as to how much we create. You know, the, the oversight and the regulation is necessary to not have to come back and redo this later. But I, I don't think we want to create more bureaucracy, more financial, you know, requirement and, and just more inefficiency in a program would be my only caution there. I think grow rights are absolutely important. The one thing that I would really, really like to point out too that I think is tremendous that not a lot of people have mentioned today are micro businesses, micro businesses, micro businesses. These are essential to maintain equity in this market, whether it's today or 10, 15 years from now. These micro businesses are essential to all small businesses that want to enter this market. One of the big things that we're learning from our medical market that we've had for just about seven years now, a little over seven years, that all started as small businesses that are now majoritely owned by multi-state that all started as small businesses that are now majoritely owned by multi state operators. So, you know, we want to make sure that the money that is being spent in Connecticut is being, you know, earned by residents of Connecticut and being reinvested in the state of Connecticut. You know, our Connecticut residents that are going to be our entrepreneurs will be employing Connecticut residents. So there will be more tax dollars coming from just the employees alone. There there are so many other things that that come into this, and I saw a lot of other protections in here for public and student housing. I thought was tremendous. Parents' rights regarding child welfare, adoption, fostering of of children, students losing financial aid and their housing as well, and and minors having their schooling affected by simple possession charges from stuff that they don't even know what they're getting into. And maybe somebody just asked them to actually hold it, and they were naive enough to do so. You know, there there's a lot of things in this bill that I think are so essential. You know, one of the other things that I I heard earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Essenter. You have three minutes. Please conclude your remarks.
No problem. Real quick, some other things that I heard discussed earlier. Addiction rates, nine percent or less for addiction to cannabis, so just want to make that very clear. You know, your your stimulants are much higher than that, and there has never once been an overdose from cannabis in the entire history that anybody has ever been able to find. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
I thank you for that testimony, and I do thank you for pointing that out. That is something that I I learned early on when I started to look into cannabis, when we were talking about the medicinal aspect of it with thoughts leading to legalization. There's never been any report anywhere that anyone has ever overdosed from cannabis. So thank you for making that point, and and thank you for the points that you made on where we we feel we need to strengthen the bill or not apply as much bureaucracy to the bill. That is duly noted. I don't see any hands raised, so I will re double check. Nope, I do not see any hands raised. So thank you so much for hanging in there with us tonight, Brian. Thank you for your testimony, your time, and your commitment to this cause. This is very important, so we do appreciate your input.
Appreciate all you guys staying up this late to to listen to us. And I see my man Devon's on there still too, so I'm going to hang around and listen to him too, if that's okay.
Yes, it is. Thank you so much. You have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
You're welcome. All right, so moving on. Albert Castillo. Hope I said that right. Do we still have Albert with us? C U S E O. All right, well, moving on to the Marijuana Policy Project, Devon Ward, you have the floor, sir.
Hello, I'm here.
I'm sorry, there you are. You have the floor, Albert.
For some reason, my video, can you see me?
Actually, we're going to have our clerk Devin see if he can help you with that. There you go. We can see you. Looking good.
Good evening. A long, long day, afternoon, morning. Thank you so much for for staying so late. I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible. I would like to point out thank you to Senator Kushner and Representative Porter and all the the Labor and Public Employees Committee members. I just want to point out, I'm I'm going to try to fill in some gaps. I've had, I'm here speaking on behalf of six three eight two. I'm on the fence. I'm a little bit opposed. However, if some of the things could get worked out, I support the bill to strengthen the negotiations for the probate clerks. However, I'd like to just point out, I, Anne Hodges, mentioned earlier that in one of her discussions about intentional lack of transparency, I believe the local probate courts lack transparency, and it causes issues with not being able to know what the revenue is to know what would be fair compensation for them. And Senate Representative Harry Aurora mentioned one of the statutes, probate court employees shall not be deemed state employees and shall serve at the pleasure of the judge of the court of probate in which they are employed. That beca- and because the probate judges are are elected officials, that makes the probate clerks from my, I've had thirty years of experience with the probate court system. I've experienced five judges. My grandmother passed away, and I was a beneficiary. The probate court made things very difficult for me, and I've been working through that. However, I have experienced going through many probate hearings where I've had to appeal to the appellate court and the superior court. I want to point out that the probate system is very complex. It's a separate entity. It's not part of the judicial branch. It's a separate entity. There's the Probate Administration and the Probate Administration employees. Those are state employees. Then there's the Probate Assembly, which is made up of all of the probate judges that act as the committee for the directors for the probate assembly that basically tell them what to do, and then the probate assembly tells the local probate courts what to do. And I don't see how it will be possible for the probate clerks to get to be able to negotiate their salaries and still answer and act at the pleasure of the local probate judges without having, I think it speaks volumes, that I've heard there's four hundred probate employees that are underpaid. However, only maybe a dozen or so showed up at this committee to complain about their payments. I believe there's an underlying systemic issue of fear in the probate system of why they haven't spoken out. I've heard of surveys and things like that. So I believe the, I, the, I overheard the Judge Pryor recently.
Mr. Cuseo?
Yes, sir.
You have three minutes. Please conclude your remarks.
Okay, I believe that the the collective bargaining for the clerks cannot take place efficiently until the probate judges and the way they are elected is made more efficient or some, some somehow disconnected from from being, being able to make the clerk, the clerks nervous for working for them. I think they should adopt some of the superior court fundamentals on how the superior courts run their systems, where the judges move from district to district. The clerks are well trained, and it doesn't matter that they should be trained well enough that they can work with with any judge in any district without having some sort of friendly relationship with them, because then the clerks become just another, another ham, another hand or another stamp for that judge and and it cannot, and it cannot, there's one statute. Any person having the statute enact that was concerning probate court operations took effect October first two thousand, any person having any knowledge of any matter involving corruption, unethical practices, violations of state laws or regulations, or mismanagement, gross waste, funds, abuse, authority, danger, public safety occurring in any of the department agencies, any quasi-agency, or any public probate court, any person having that knowledge. Right now, any probate clerk that would want to be a whistleblower can't be a whistleblower because they are, would be too afraid to get fired. So that, that has to change. Thank you for listening.
You're very welcome. Thank you for hanging in there with us tonight and for your testimony on this important piece of legislation. I do not see, and I was going to double check, actually I do. Senator Julie Kushner, you have the floor, ma'am.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Cuseo, for your testimony here tonight. It's obvious that you have done some research and you have some experience that you brought to light something we hadn't really considered, and that is the role of when someone serves at the pleasure, does it perhaps often reinforce some negatives that we, I don't think any of us would want. So I appreciate you bringing that to light. Hadn't thought about that previously, and I do think that there are ways to organize the court such that collective bargaining can be productive. We've seen very creative approaches in many different industries that allow for constructive collective bargaining relationships. So I appreciate your comments here tonight, and thank you for hanging in there and testifying at such a late hour.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. You as well, Albert. Okay, next up, we do have Marijuana Policy Project, Devon Ward, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I think my video's not working, but it's fine. I want to thank the chair, Senator Kushner, Representative Porter, ranking members, Senator Sampson, Representative Aurora. My name is Devon Ward, Senior Legislative Counsel for the Marijuana Policy Project, largest marijuana policy reform organization in the United States. M P P supports the objectives of six three seven seven, most notably supporting workers in the cannabis industry and replacing cannabis prohibition with an equitable system of legalization and regulation. We support, you know, the objectives of the bill regarding equity. And the the only comment, you know, I I do have on the bill, I'm not going to belabor the point because I know everybody's been here a long time tonight, but, you know, the bill does contemplate community host agreements with municipalities, and we've seen in other states that those those agreements have really devoted efforts of small businesses and allowed some municipalities to be predatory for for small and and minority businesses. And so I would strongly caution against the use of of community host agreements. But the aims of the bill specifically regarding labor peace and and equity in the industry are are things that M P P supports wholeheartedly. And so I I think six, six three seven seven is a is a great way to start the conversation here in Connecticut around how to build an equitable cannabis industry. But one thing I do want to want to comment on too is Representative Aurora mentioned, you know, he said something that that, you know, states with less regulation usually, you know, have, you know, better competition and and more competition amongst, you know, industry or market participants. And, you know, I I just want to be clear that labor peace agreements are a standard feature in this new cannabis industry, whether, you know, it's it's being contemplated in New York in Governor Cuomo's bill, it's in the Senate bill in New York, it's included in New York, New Jersey's legalization bill that that just passed in in December. So labor peace is a standard feature in in the cannabis industry, you know, on the East Coast and the Midwest. And so, you know, this isn't a situation where it's a race to the bottom, where everybody's racing to to try to have the place with the least regular regulation. You know, we want to build a cannabis industry that that is on par and and indeed surpasses some of the protections that are that are out there for workers. And and so, you know, really want to, you know, press those points on the committee. But I I think the committee for for their time tonight, you know, this has been a long hearing, and I really thank the committee for raising this issue. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Devon. We thank you for hanging in there with us tonight. It has been a long day and night indeed, but we are here for great causes. And we definitely do agree, and I'm glad that you stated that labor peace agreement is more of a rule than an exception, especially as this business continues to thrive and and, you know, we build it up. And it goes hand in hand with the equity piece. So we see it as synonymous. You can't have one without the other, and that is why we are proud to have this bill before our committee and supporters such as yourself. With that, I'm going to give Senator Kushner the floor.
It's so hard to speak after my esteemed colleague because you always say everything I'm thinking.
And it's and it's midnight, so.
All right, so appreciate your remarks, Rob, and I I really was feeling the same way. It really is, Devon, Mr. Ward, it's really great to have heard your testimony at the end of a long day because it's affirming of what we believe that equity and labor peace are are connected at the hip and that when we look forward to having a robust industry, a new industry in Connecticut, we want want it to be one where there's a pathway for everyone to achieve good jobs with good benefits and with equity built in. So I so appreciate you bringing that out in your testimony from your, you know, vast experience in this field. It's very helpful to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I do not see any further hands raised. So thank you again, Devon. We appreciate you.
Have a good night.
Have a great night. You're welcome. Bye bye. Uh, next, we have Gerald Gray. Is Gerald Gray with us? I do see Gerald Gray, yeah.
I'm trying to click on.
All right, we hear you. We can get your video working.
I don't know. I don't know why.
That may be on our part. We're going to see if we can get our clerk Devin to to get you on.
It says start, I clicked it already. Start my video. I'll try it again.
There you go.
I think that's me. Okay. Okay, well, good evening, committee members at all. It's, we're still going to make it on the same date. As you see, my name is Gerald Gray, and I'm speaking to you in opposition to raise Bill sixty three eighty two, which is so titled, "An Act Strengthening the Probate Court System." This bill seeks to enable Connecticut's probate court workers to become deemed state of Connecticut employees, ostensibly for the purpose of gaining collective bargaining rights for better wages. In my submitted testimony, I state that I oppose the bill from two perspectives, that being opposition to the probate court workers becoming hybrid state employees, and more importantly to me, my opposition to the concept of what the title of this bill states of this purpose, that being to strengthen the Connecticut Probate Court system. I want to again point out that Connecticut Probate Court is not part of the state of Connecticut judicial system. It is an autonomous, independent, self-contained court of equity operating independently unto itself, and it is overseen by its own probate court administration, which is not a state agency, as some testimony indicated earlier in this hearing. I come here with a different point of view and perspective and position from the others who have testified today on this bill. I come here as one of many, many Connecticut probate court victims who have suffered and continue to suffer unspeakable loss and pain and agony at the hands of the probate court system of Connecticut. You have been told today that the Connecticut Probate Court is partially self-funded and partially state of Connecticut general fund funded. Judge De De Niro informed you that seventy five to eighty percent of the money comes from fees. That is the self-funding. The big, big elephant in the room is where the self-funding comes from. Connecticut probate courts, too many sources of self-funding revenue are generated in their conservatorship guardianship enterprise and in their probating of decedent estates. As I relate in my written testimony, which I sincerely hope all of you will read and understand, I under, I use my own observation and experience these past twelve unspeakably horrific years of my mother Dolores Gray and I being in the ruthlessly brutal clutches of the Connecticut Probate Court's conservatorship guardianship enterprise system to speak of the purpose of serve, to speak of the horrific nature of what the probate court has become, and it's going from its original purpose of service to purpose of being a predatory, money-making business enterprise operating in purpose of self-gain for all the directly involved players and interested parties. These being the judges, the attorneys, and the court-appointed conservators and guardians who use the assets, see. who use the assets seized from the probate court sentenced conserve persons and also gleaned from the Connecticut taxpayers as payment to themselves for their services of their, in their stripping of the targeted prey of their civil rights. So it's conserve the prey and then seize their assets so as to enable the involuntary redistribution of the prey, seize assets into their own pockets for payment of their services of so turning the prey into probate court-owned cattle, AKA wards of the probate court. The number of probate, of Connecticut probate sentenced conservatorships is increasing significantly year by year as this Connecticut probate enterprise has created more than twenty-two thousand active conservatorships holding more than one point one billion dollars in assets that have been taken over from Connecticut conserve persons' assets by the probate court. It is the position of many of us that Connecticut probate court has become a human trafficking business enterprise whose revenue generation action is the stripping of targeted prey of their civil rights of civil and self-governorship so as to seize their assets and transfer those assets from the targeted prey over into their own pockets and coffers as payment for their services of doing this.
Ms. Gray?
I, I will wrap up as soon as I can. I've been, you know, waiting a long time. It is as simple and as unconscionably nefarious as that. Such I cannot think of a more inaccurate assumption as that is made by Mr. Aurora earlier that he assured that probate court parties are good people. Our U.S. Senator Dick Loomisall testified at the national level that Connecticut probate court is, quote, "If I see a probate judge is making tons of money off of the targeted prey and off taxpayers, as Connecticut probate judges are not accountable or liable or culpable for any of their probate court actions and having granted themselves same sovereign immunity that real judges and real courts have and an immunity which the probate judge has then conferred to all eternities and conservators and those parties and their actions with whom they are complicit in the probate court business enterprise." Yale Law School Professor Don Langby has testified his opinion that the probate court of Connecticut is the worst in the country, that it is so irredeemably corrupt that it should be dismantled, be eliminated altogether. I agree with Loomisall and Langby. It's been my own agonizingly painfully gotten understanding that probate court is more than anything else, a predatory, above-the-law, money-making, racketeering business enterprise, one that is inflicting such extreme atrocities of abuse upon its prey as in inflicting such enormous pain and suffering and agony and loss upon its prey victims in service to the probate court insiders' own self-interest and personal financial gain as they are grabbing hundreds of millions of dollars from their now powerless prey and from Connecticut taxpayers.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
I, I've extended you by a couple of minutes. I'm gonna have to ask you to please stop and let me see if there are any comments or questions for you.
All righty.
Yes, Representative Aurora.
Ms. Gray, I, I find what you're saying incredibly interesting and, and I, I, please finish. You know, I, I have only three minutes. I don't have any more. Please use my three minutes. Finish, please.
Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I will just point out that Connecticut has been drastically criticized for having the highest probate court fees in the country, for having the highest death tax and, and always having more people fleeing the state to relocate. Here, I will summarize by saying that while I believe that all workers, including probate court workers, should receive a living wage, it is not the way to vote to enable them to become some kind of union-represented state of Connecticut employees and that Connecticut probate is not part of the state judicial system and operates as an unbridled, self-contained, autonomous, self-regulating, independent system, one that is widely viewed to be cancerously malignant with rampant and extensive corruption within and throughout the probate court. As Mr. Kushner said, there is virtually no transparency in the operation of Connecticut probate court. I fear that anything that supports increasing the strength of the self-serving business enterprise in giving any of the probate court insiders, including the clerks, any more power, any more control, any more access to assets and funds, to even more continued ability and opportunity to partake in profiteering that comes with being an insider in this self-serving closed system is dangerous. A hybrid concoction of redefinition of who are the employees of Connecticut probate employers of Connecticut probate court clerks will not resolve the real issues of the comprehensive systematic malignancy of Connecticut probate court. A hybrid concoction of redefinition of who employs and who represents the probate clerks will not resolve the real issues which remain in place in this vile racket that is probate court, a racket that has so many dirty players from top to bottom. And I just want to point out as a personal note, Judge Beverly Strickethous, who is the sitting Milford probate judge and the Connecticut probate court administrator, I want to say that she has been most prominently and directly active and participatory in the perpetration of horrific, horrific probate court abuses afflicted upon my mother Dolores Gray and myself and many others since two thousand and nine. We have been robbed of everything of our combined one hundred and sixty-five years lifetimes and have been murdered. Our lives have been destroyed. In my opinion, Judge Strickethous is front and center representing everything so very wrong, everything so very bad, so very dark, so very treacherous and diabolical about the Connecticut probate court enterprise. And that is my conclusion. Thank you for letting me continue.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. I do not see any hands raised, but I will double check. So we will go ahead and thank you for your testimony tonight and thank you for hanging in there with us.
Yes, I, I really wanted to be able to, you know, present myself. So I've been on, I've been, what, thirteen hours, fourteen, fourteen hours and three seconds.
Well, we do thank you and appreciate you participating in this public hearing tonight.
And I appreciate you as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. You have a good night.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And last on the list, we have, last but not least, Ashley Collins. Are you with us?
I'm here, but I don't know how to access the video.
Devin will help you with that.
Oh, got it. I see her.
Okay.
Good evening, committee members, Representative Porter, Senator Kushner, and the members of the Labor and, the Labor and Public Employees Committee. I try to keep this as short and sweet as possible. I've been on since ten, excuse my whole day. And it's more, even more important to me because I explained to my six-year-old why I needed to be on this Zoom for the entire day. I was there last year and I was rocking my rap. And this year, I'm just gonna show you my legs, I'm gonna go from there. So I'm here as testified in support of House Bill six three seventy-six, the Crown Act, "Act Creating a Respectful and Open World for a Natural Hair in the State of Connecticut." I did submit a written testimony. I'm just gonna read you my last paragraph, which states, "Hair does not define the person and should not block access to educational and employment opportunities. Our uniqueness should be celebrated. As we move, as we move toward creating more peace in the world around us, let us also remove the barriers, the barriers that disproportionately impact individuals with curls and coils. Let us truly reflect the changes that are happening around us, like the election of our first female vice president, who also happens to be a woman of color. Let us take the lead in assuring that all people, assuring all people that their hair does not define who they are or where they can go in this life. Let us take the small step toward an impactful change." And I say that as someone who lives in Hartford, works in Hartford, is raising my family in Hartford, I also work in workforce development. I've been a nonprofit for over fifteen years. So this is a conversation that I'm always involved in because I'm constantly talking to people about presentation. And at some point, you get tired of having people readjust who they really are just to be presentable to other people that feel uncomfortable or maybe even inferior to what we represent. Our hair is more than just, you know, a style. It speaks history, it speaks truth. And it's, it's who we are. And I refuse, refuse, refuse to tell my daughter to adjust any part of her natural being just to be able to have access to a table because we are the table. And with that, I will finish my testimony. Thank you so much.
Wow, thank you for that. That was powerful, short, concise, and to the point. You are right, our crown. In other words, how we express how we feel about that crown. And I, and I thank you for hanging in there tonight. I thank you for setting example that you set for your daughter tonight. Some things we have to press on. We have to stand up. We must be relentless. We must continue to fight the good fight and that is what we're doing. So with that, I will give the floor to Senator Kushner.
Well, I just wanted to say how happy I am that you were the last speaker tonight. You are the last, number ninety-eight to speak. And, and I can't thank you enough for ending this very long day of testimony on such a positive note of equity and fairness and justice and hope. And I appreciate that as someone who's been here all day as well. And I applaud your perseverance and your dedication. And it, it really is uplifting to hear from you and to have heard from so many wonderful witnesses today that testified to the importance of this Crown Act. And, you know, about, I started out the day in this sweatshirt that was for the Crown Act. And then I took it off and wore my suit jacket for a while. And then as I began to feel a little worn down, as the hour got later, I found putting back the sweatshirt brought me back to life and made me feel good about what we're doing here today. So thank you so much for being our final witness tonight and everything you brought to this hearing.
Thank you so much. You guys have a great night. And if it doesn't pass this go-round, I'll be back next year too.
Oh, it's passing. No need to come back.
I love it.
I'm gonna speak those things that are not as if they were.
Amen.
Amen. Well, with that being said, thank you so much, Ashley. Have a great night. Tell your baby girl I said goodnight. She should be very proud of her mom. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, I know we did miss out on some folks as we went through this list. So I will take this opportunity at twelve ten a.m. to ask if there is anyone, anyone in the virtual room that is not testified and would like to testify at this time. Well, it seems as if we may have come to the conclusion of our public hearing. So at this time, I will adjourn this Labor and Public Employees Public Hearing. And thank you all for your patience and your participation. Good night and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.